Turn in.
Yeah.
Ready to go? We'll call our meeting to order. First item is roll call.
Councilmember Grossman.
I am here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor and I.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Rooney.
Here.
And Mayor Scoog.
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Great. Okay, next item is presentation library user statistics. Casey, you are up.
It is so fascinating.
Welcome, Casey.
Thank you.
This is your first solo presentation, isn't it?
Uh, no.
No.
No. I'm old handed this now.
That's what I said.
Do they have any hand warmers?
I got gloves.
Would you like a glove?
Yeah. Yes. Hey, did they turn off our...
Who's in charge, Casey?
They turned off 800 homes. Maybe they just didn't turn this one back on.
Would you use the microphone?
This way. I can talk really loud.
That's gotta go over into the tape, so. June is recording it. Your comments are being recorded.
Very good, thank you, June. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm glad to be here tonight to share our fascinating library user statistics. So, I'll talk about people. In 2016-17, we had a total visits of over 286,000. As of December, we are already up by 54% at 148,000 visitors through our front door. What's so fascinating is library visits are up by 1.2 billion annually in the last 12 years, libraries. So, the majority of the people that come through our front doors, as we talked about this last week at our Budget Retreat, almost at the Budget Summit, they want help with technology. That is like the huge thing. So, they want access to Internet computers, they want assistance with their devices, and the free Wi-Fi. Again, we're part of a rural library county system. We're considered a rural library system. So, the majority of some of our library users here in the county do not have access to Wi-Fi and computers. So, they really rely heavily on us. The other great thing is library cards. We have over 23,000 residents here in Prescott Valley that are active library users. That is huge. More than half of our community uses the library. In the YLN, the Yavapai Library Network, we have a total of 125,000 users, active users who use the library system. And that's over 55% of Yavapai residents have library cards. That, I think, says a lot about our community, the education, and how important libraries are to them. Again, the Internet usage, we had over 65,000 hours of computer usage. That is up by 34% from the prior year. And again, we are on target to surpass that more so. It's just people continuously come in and they want Internet. Wi-Fi access, over 3,000 patrons, we're hoping to up that. We are looking at our Wi-Fi printing options. We don't currently have that, so that's a big, big need in our community right now. Check out. So, we checked out over 435,000 items in the prior fiscal year. That's just incredible for our, I mean, considering, you know, we only have over 40,000 residents in this community. That, I think, averaged out in one of the reports from the county, that's 10 books per resident in Yavapai County, even though some may not have a card, but that's what it equivalates to. Holds, over 67,000 holds, patrons have put on hold, meaning they want books from other libraries, they put it on hold, and it comes through to our library. So, that's over 67,000 materials that our staff is handling. Total for the Yavapai Library Network, over 432,000 holds in our system. And we answer everyone's question. We answered over 38,000 questions last year. That's 126 questions a year. And Ted and I love to talk, so we can, you know, answer questions all day long. So, it's like, sometimes I do, I get a bag of sand in my mouth, and I'm like, God. Book a Librarian, which is one of our most popular services of late, within the last six months, a patron can request the services of a librarian. We can set aside an appointment to help you with your e-readers, with research, with technology, job searching. We are helping a student over here at Yavapai College, NAU, to apply for graduate school. So, those are some of the things. We're editing their documents. So, this is a great service. And last month, just last month alone, we had over 30 people that we helped. So, it is, it's a great service that we can provide for our community for free. And that's it. This is your awesome staff. Stuart's still in the picture. Well, I couldn't Photoshop him out yet, but that's okay. He's still a part of us, so we'll get a new picture soon. That's it. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? Mike?
Yeah, I'm just, I never remember, and I've always asked, is how long is your library card good for? Does it have to be renewed?
It's good, usually how the county system works it, it's good for two years. You have to use it within that two-year period. A year to two years. I think they may have bumped it to a year. So, yeah, you can just come in, as long as you use it yearly, you'll stay in the system.
All right.
Good. Any other questions? Jody?
Casey, I remember there's multiple events and programs that the library offers. It's amazing. I wanted to ask of one particular that got my interest, and I think it's called, is it called Coffee with a Librarian?
Yes, Coffee with a Librarian.
How's that going?
It actually, it was our first, it was last Friday, but of course, I couldn't go because I was at the Budget Retreat. We had 19 people there.
Wow.
So, that was really, really awesome. And I had been getting a lot of questions and emails about that, when people want to know if I'm going to be at the next one. So, I'm saying, yes, I'll be there, barring another budget.
Laura?
No more budget stuff.
Casey, we are being told by elements of the community, particularly some branches of media, that libraries are dinosaurs and dead and dying. What do you contribute to the fact that ours is growing and excelling?
Well, I think we have some amazing innovative staff who come up, who know our community. We've done extensive surveys, which we hope to continue that with a community assessment planning, strategic plan. We really know our community. We've really asked them what they've wanted. We take notice when programs succeed, when they fail. We provide the materials that they want, so we listen to what they want. And I think that's a huge part of our success.
Good. Other questions?
Yeah.
Rick?
I don't know if you have this information available right now, but I, it just occurred to me that I'd kind of like to know. Per capita, do we have any idea about the usage versus other communities locally?
You know, there's a lot of competition between Prescott Public Library and us, and I think it was back in November, we surpassed them with the amount of library cards that we issued. I think we issued like 323 library cards to new users, and they issued, I mean, it was like 300, but we still beat them by 23 patrons. So, I think that as our community grows, our library grows, and because we're part of the Yavapai Library Network system, we just really have a great relationship with all the other libraries, so we really work together. I think with other counties, granted, Maricopa County is huge, their system, Maricopa and then the other surrounding cities like, you know, Phoenix, Glendale, Mesa, Tempe, you know, they don't have any part of that. They participate in, you know, reciprocal borrowing, but they do not have an amazing county consortium that we have that really works together for our community.
Yeah, I was thinking more rural than...
And again, I mean, I could look at, I can certainly look at that.
Well, it's all right. I was just curious.
Yeah. I know that we're the only county in Arizona that has this consortium. This, you know, with all the special libraries, K through 12, special academic and public.
You're doing a good job. Thank you.
Marty?
Yeah. I just think that the library here is just a wonderful asset to our community, and the fact that it's constantly gaining more patrons is great. As someone who uses the hold system a lot, I'm part of a book club, and a lot of times the book isn't easily available through here, and it's just amazing how fast it comes through after you put the hold on. And, I mean, just the ease of use is incredible. I also know that our library here, I mean, you provide so many different services, plus you have the book sale coming up.
Yes.
And it's just amazing what is done here, and the fact that we have meeting rooms out there that people in the community could use. I think that's also a huge benefit to our community.
I agree.
So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, I personally have used the part where we've come in, you didn't have the book, but you were able to find it in another library, and it came over to ours, and that was a wonderful, you know, availability to people. And the other thing that's great is, can we talk a little bit about the Friends group?
Yes, most definitely.
I just love that and all that they do.
We have an amazing Friends group. I was just met with the President, Diane Lamont, and Don Lamont, who, he is the Vice President, to coordinate this huge book sale that is happening on the 10th of February, actually, the 9th and the 10th, that Friday and Saturday. It is such a huge undertaking, and they work so hard for us, for the library, to, you know, get this book sale to generate funds for the library. So, yeah, that book sale is this Friday and Saturday, and 9:00 to 3:00, and then Friday, 9:00 to 5:00. And Don and Mary, Don and Diane do an amazing job supporting our library.
And when I went to the book sale before, it was up in the Crystal Room, so is that where it's going to be again?
It is actually going to be in front of the checkout area, in the Glassford Hill room, and the book sale area, so they have a bunch of tables set up, so there'll be books everywhere.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Any other questions? Larry?
Casey, do you take donations of books for the book sale, or is it just part of the circulation that you're rotating now?
No, we take, there is some part of our circulation that, disc cards, we do add to the book sale, but we get the majority of our donations from the community. So, and we love those donations, so keep them coming in.
Any other questions or comments?
Bravo.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work, Casey. We appreciate that. Okay, next item is discussion, OMI increase. I wonder if we should put that off until next month? You're up, Neil.
You'd have to put all three of them up to achieve your goal.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This isn't going to be as fascinating as the last presentation, but I was thinking, you know, maybe, maybe we could do something like Coffee with the Sewer Guy, and we could step it up a bit, and that...
I don't know. I don't know.
Nobody come?
Yeah. Coffee and sewer, I don't think that goes, but no.
Keep talking, Neil.
All right. We'll get on to official business, then. I'm here tonight to talk about a possible mid-year adjustment to the OMI contract. Back in June, July, when we signed the last contract with OMI, we told them that we were not going to put a cost increase into their contract, because it was essentially a punishment for the fact that they screwed up on our arsenic sampling. And so, but in that contract, we said that we would consider a mid-year adjustment to their contract, and so that's why I'm back here tonight. As you recall, the arsenic issue was, essentially, it was a sampling issue more than anything. When the well in question was sampled, it was not being operated, it was, you know, not being served to the public, so it was put on, it was basically started up, sampled, and shut back down again, just so that we could run the test for ADEQ. And that came back over the limit, and then follow-up sampling wasn't done. And so, there was some oversight. That's what the issue was. Our citizens were never at risk. And so, I just, I wanted to remind everybody of that, because I'm sure there are questions about that. So, anyways, the, what you have in front of you is an amendment to the contract for a mid-year adjustment for 2%. So, I'm presenting that to you for your consideration. And, you know, maybe you might ask, well, okay, why should we do a mid-year adjustment anyways? Maybe we should just continue the rest of the year the way we've been going, and we can do that. But I did want to make you aware that there are some, there were some changes in scope of services at the beginning of the year. One of them was to increase the number of water meters that OMI was installing during the year, and that's part of our meter replacement program. You know, we're on the last two-year cycle now, to where we're going to have basically all of our manual meters out of the ground. There're going to be no more. And so, we increased our budget for this current year, and for next year, we'll be increasing it. We increased that number from, I believe it was $450,000 per year purchasing meters, up to $750,000 per year. And so, OMI is essentially putting more meters in the ground for us. And in addition, we increased the number of cleaning miles in our sewer system from 60 miles per year to 75 miles per year. And so, that all came with a no increase in cost to us, but if you would consider then, you know, a 2% increase for the last half of this year, that may be fair compensation for that. So, anyways, those were two things where they were, you know, increasing their scope of services, and we were holding them flat for the first six months. I believe the memo that I've outlined there answers all other questions or addresses things, so, but if you do have any other questions or issues, I would be happy to answer those.
Question, Rick?
Well, it's not really a question. I was just going to make the comment that I think it's only fair that we're asking them to do more work, so we should certainly pay them more for it. And I think that the six months that they've foregone the increase, I think, is enough, in my mind, to pay for a basic mistake. It wasn't something they did on purpose, it was something that happened, and it's been handled, to my satisfaction, certainly. And I'm, I think this is a good move.
Good. Other questions, comments?
I concur.
Laura?
I concur, because $36,314 is not insignificant.
Good. Any other, Mary? No?
Oh, I...
Mary?
I was just going to say that they are a good company. We've had a tremendous relationship with them through, for many years. They've done a great job in the town. And I know that we've learned from the recent incident that happened, so.
Any other comments? Jody?
Neil, help me refresh. I remember there were some mitigation efforts, there were multiple bullet points. Do you happen to have a list of those with you by chance, or could you maybe pull up just some of the major?
As far as changes that OMI made, so that this wouldn't happen again, that sort of thing?
Correct. That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. They actually went through, and they looked at their procedures, and they instituted some changes to have multiple people reviewing reports. So, they had a, I think it was a 12-step process that went to a 17-step process. And actually, I could probably get Chris Maines to come up here and talk about that a little bit more, if you're interested in that. The other thing that I wanted to mention that I didn't mention earlier is that we did complete the final quarterly sampling through the end of this year. There were, you know, several more samples. All of them came back less than the 10-part-per-billion requirement, and ADEQ has since put us back on a three-year cycle for sampling, so we don't have to sample again for three years on that. For them, this is, I mean, arsenic is a, is an issue that they look at in terms of a chronic, not an acute health risk. And so, even had we, you know, come up with the number higher than the 10 parts-per-billion, and had we served that to our public, really, the only consequences to us would be, had been the quarterly sampling, and at the end of the year, in our annual report, to tell the public that that's what happened. We wouldn't have to have done anything immediately, because it's not an immediate health risk, it's not where, you know, you have to advise people not to drink the water because it's not safe. None of that applies. It's a, it's a very chronic, long-term, you know, 50-year type thing. So, I just wanted to point that out as well. And Chris, did you want to talk about the, some of the steps you implemented?
Sure. And thank you for the positive feedback on that. So, some of the steps that we took was...
Stay a little closer to the microphone.
Yeah, so some of the steps that we took was to incorporate reporting, kind of work orders through our maintenance connection, so it triggers us when reports are coming up and when they're due, and we have to close those out once they're completed. Couple other things we did was, immediately upon receiving a MCL, which is a violation, which happens from time to time, we have support in Denver that we immediately reach out to, and they're on call 24 hours. These are experts in Denver that say, here's what you need to do next. We do have monitoring plans that our staff are required now to review and be trained on, on sampling requirements, of what happens if there are samples that come up above the limits. So, we've definitely added several more steps. And another thing is, anytime a sample is collected, we have a check-off list, and we create this check-off list annually for the entire year. So, once that sample's collected, they check it off, and they write the value, so that value stands out, and it can compare it against state requirements, so. Does that help answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions coming? Oh, I'm sorry. You get some more?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I do remember that we did move from 12, I believe, up to 17 on the mitigation. So, of those items that were put in place for the new standard work, which of those have been fully implemented?
We've implemented all of them. Anything that we've created, we've implemented. Another thing that we implemented was two-person verification. So, one person records the values, a second person verifies those values. But we've implemented all of those. We don't want to go backwards.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to recall, too. I think we did have, after that incident, you said we returned to a three-year, I guess, observation, and we were under, I think, a different process under that time. And I don't think we were fined or incurred a fine as a result of that.
That's correct. There was no fine associated with that.
Right, okay.
Mary? No? Anyone else? Neil? Had to get your name again.
Chris.
Craig?
Chris.
Chris, I'm sorry. I think you're doing a great job, and we do appreciate what OMI is doing for us. Neil, keep him working.
Thank you. So, we'll bring this back to you next week, then.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item. Presentation, water leak detection. Mark, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me. I'll try not to get too caught up in the technicalities of the equipment, and try to give you an overview of the program. The leak detection equipment was purchased in 2014, and that's when we embarked on the leak detection program from that point forward. Yeah, so, they were purchased in 1415. We, anticipating the launch of our leak detection program, which immediately followed, we negotiated, added the leak detection program in our scope of services with CH2M, and that started in 1516. Leak detection was launched in July of 15, and the big asset to the program for us is actually, what you guys have allowed us to do is, is our FlexNet meter reading program, because we take full advantage of leak detection through utilization of our FlexNet meter reading program and all of our transmitter up on the mountain. Makes it like hugely more efficient, yeah. So, the goals of the program, we evaluate the older segments of our water system, we're utilizing the equipment in our master plan communities, before any of our master plan communities go through their two-year warranty period, before we ever release any of them. We not only, and actually, this is an added benefit, it's not in the contracted scope, but CH has agreed to work with us on this as well, because it's a benefit to them. If we find a problem, we can fix it. Anything that goes into a warranty before it clears it, we go out and we deploy all of our leak detection equipment in those units, and we'll run those units... all of our leak detection equipment in those units and we'll run those units for at least 30 to 45 days and just make sure there's no leaks on, on newly installed infrastructure, because we find them. It, it happens. And so it, it's, it's just added value. Locating leaks prior to excavation, which minimizes the water loss, reduces our operating costs, that's a, that's a given. And one of the big things, we work closely with John Mundelow, trying to keep our reportable water loss under the 10% state mandated. So, let's see, maybe a little bit hard to see, but anyway, we've done three rounds of leak detection, we're in our third cycle this year. We started up in the top, well, in the bottom of town, off of 89, the Addis area, down there in the bottom with our first deployment. And then in the second year, we actually moved into the adjacent unit. This year, we're actually doing all the Links Lake, Castle Canyon area in here. So equipment, I won't bore you with it all, these are the components that make up our leak detection equipment. The perma logs are the yellow ones, they are the ones that are deployed into the ground. These, the correlation equipment is used to actually pinpoint the leak. The little yellow-orange device at the bottom is a PDA and that's what we program our equipment with. There's miscellaneous equipment here for audible tone, listening for leaks in the ground. And on the right there is one of our smart points with our FlexNet system. This is just a, a standard deployment and what we've done is, what you'll see in the both pictures there, that's a valve riser with the valve lid sitting off to the side. We're getting ready to deploy one of the perma logs down in and it has a little magnetic, or it's magnetic, it has a magnet right on the end of it. We drop it down, set it right on top of the valve and that's what actually secures it to the valve while, while we're doing leak detection through that period. So here's how, the basics of the equipment and how it works. So as I said before, this little device here is what we program our perma logs with. Once those, once those are programmed, these, these perma logs turn on every night between, for an hour between 2:00 and 3:00 a.m., which is a, probably a low usage time, the lowest usage time. And that's what we need so that we can, those perma logs are listening for leak, leak noise. The equipment's set up, has algorithms based, they know what the wavelengths are and all that. And they, once they go into a leak mode and they sense the leak, they're transmitting that information every, like, after they shut off, it's, it's pretty immediate. That information is transferred, transferred up to the TGB, down into the town, the billing office. It's just like reading a meter and it's the same thing. It's done automatically. So what we do is, every morning when we're in a leak detection mode, we, all we do is we, we go in, we collaborate with the billing department, we have 40 perma logs deployed, we look for them to see if any of them are in leak mode. If they are, then we go out and we'll follow up. So the equipment, once we find a leak, we put the correlation equipment, we've been notified of a leak, we know where it is, we have an idea because the perma logs told us that. We go out, we deploy these correlators, leak correlators, and all that does is it actually pinpoints the distance from one correlator to the other. It'll tell you within three feet of where the water leak is. So since the inception of the program, before I go into these three, there's a little bit of a learning curve with this and there's, there's certain, it's just, the types of pipe have a big bearing on, you know, how successful we are in leak detection. And as we get better at it, obviously, you know, as we work through it, but, you know, some of our areas are older and we have AC pipes, some of them we have plastic pipes, some of them we have ductile pipe, and they're all, they all conduct noise differently. So, you know, it's a learning curve, but actually, the staff, CH, has done an outstanding job. And nine leaks may not seem like a lot, but in some of those areas, you know, the first, first round, it was tough learning. That's, that's actually a, a pretty average result for, for the amount of mileage that we've run up to this point. So nine leaks confirmed, we've used equipment on numerous occasions to pinpoint leaks at excavations. A lot of times when our leaks surface, they don't actually surface right where the leak is. It could be coming up 60 feet this way, 40 feet that way. And with this equipment now, when we roll up on a leak and we have one of those, instead of having to strip asphalt or poke holes in it, there's a lot of different ways to do it, that they approach it. We bring the leak detection equipment out, audible, we put the headphones on and they just search for peak leak noise, they can pinpoint it actually right on top of the leak. It's been huge on that. We use it on almost all of our, a lot of our leaks, those that, obviously, we need to. So one of the big pieces of this is the cost to produce our water. There's a, there's a, there's a number put to all this and obviously, cost to produce our water, and that's about 60 cents a thousand gallons. So I'm not going to bore you with every one of the nine leaks, but if you look at the value at the bottom on a monthly basis, the, the tough thing with the water leak when we, when we do actually go back and try to assess, how big was the hole? How long, you know, based on ground conditions when we dug it up? What did it look like? You know, we've got to try to put in an assessment of how long it leaked. And obviously, you can apply that 60 cents a thousand gallons based on, we have, we have evaluation tools where we can tell how much a hole this big to that big, you know, a leak that's on a crack, there's tools that you can use to evaluate that. But if you look at these leaks and looked at it just on an average monthly basis, that's, that's not substantial, $1,600, $1,645. But if you look at some of these leaks that don't ever surface, just these nine leaks alone would have equated to almost $20,000. I mean, and that's the nine we've found since we started. So it, it's, it's a valuable program and we were just appreciative that you guys have allowed us to purchase the equipment, deploy it, and CH has done a great job learning and, and using the equipment. So I threw this one in here just so you could all see it. This is actually in John's neck of the woods, but I, I, I work with John pretty closely, so that's the, the mandate of 10% allowable. And you can see, since 2011, we actually met with DWR and they instituted some changes and they've been very strict on water loss. So these are the tracking points. It has gone up and down, but the bottom line, that red trend line is showing, you know, we're staying, you know, well, you know, in that 7.8, 7.9 range, which is very comfortable and that's, that's very respectable as water loss goes, especially in the size of a water system.
Say 7.9, is that your-
7.9% of the total volume that we produced annually was, is, is what we're losing.
Now, you mentioned 10% earlier, what does that number involve?
That is this. I mentioned it earlier and here's the slide that kind of just shows that we're mandated by the Department of Our Resources to keep our produced unsold number at 10% or less annually in the AMA, so.
Questions, anyone?
Questions?
I, I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you because here's another reason that although we've had a very large population increase, we aren't using any more water than we did a very long time ago. And it's another conservation effort and I applaud you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? Mike?
Yeah, I think I'm very happy to see that your graph. I think obviously what we're doing is paying off. And I had a question, could you summarize in general, and I, this may put you on the spot on those-
Sorry.
-nine different leaks? What's the common denominator there? Where, where are they located? What is-
Yeah, most of the leaks, if I went back to them, and most of those are on poly services, the old plastic, the poly lines. And a few of them are on the AC pipes. A lot of our leaks happen just from ground movement on the AC pipe and, you know, back in the day, that's not, it's not what it is today with a, you know, a bell and spigot joint. So we find a lot of them leaking on AC, especially with the couplings that bring the pipes together. That's the other one. On a mainline environment, that's pretty much where we find most of them are on AC couplings. And the other ones are all, the majority are all poly pipe.
Any, any other questions? Anyone? Laura? Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, if I remember correctly, you said this is generally on three different types of pipes that we use the equipment?
Right.
All right. Would the equipment work on any other types that would be out there or is that pretty much what we have?
That's, that's the majority of what we have in the ground. There's variations of the plastic, you know, there's different, but, you know, it's plastic, so as this leak detection equipment goes, there's just the auto, this equipment works really well on ductile iron pipe. It carries noise really, really well. PVC is also good, the, the AC pipe is actually a little bit tougher. It's rougher, you know, the sound traveling through the water to the equipment is a little bit tougher. So all, the only difference is for staff is when they deploy 40 perma logs, we deploy them in a much narrower area on the AC pipe because it doesn't carry the noise as well. So we have to shorten our distance. Ductile iron and C900 pipe, we can extend it out almost to 700, 800 feet between loggers. Where like AC pipe, we're probably deploying a logger every 150, no more than 200 feet to get effective results. We found that, obviously, in the first year. We didn't know quite how far we could go out and still get the benefit, so.
Mark-
Burning. Go ahead, Jody.
Sorry. Could you remind me, what's the shelf life on this equipment? How long is it good for before we'd have to look at repairs, replacement?
Yeah, I, I'm not really sure. This, the equipment's all chargeable, so it's, I know the battery life's, I think it was either 25 or 30 years on the battery life. And all the equipment is supported with rechargeable batteries. So, you know, will obviously change with your guys' help as technology changes, but yeah, I don't think really the battery thing, we've not had any issues regarding that at all. Or the use type of equipment. The stuff's really robust, I can tell you. It's, it's not indestructible, but it's pretty close, so.
Well, I appreciate the cost savings and certainly, as a mayor and council, we're interested in what technology costs now and in the future that's something in our budget talks that we've been hashing-
It's valuable, it's paying dividends, there's no question. You know, we have to try to like, look at this and be conservative, but I'm sure that it's more on the high side than it is on the low side. We, we always defer prior to the conservative side of how much, what this leak was and trying to provide value to you guys and give you numbers that are accurate. So it's either the lowest number, probably going that way towards the 20,000 most, most all, all the time, so.
Well, I don't think anyone would disagree with finding leaks and addressing those, that's going to save us in the long run.
Yeah, it will, definitely. Thank you.
Good. Any other question? Mark? Good job, we appreciate that. Good know, good information.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on then to the next one. Presentation, water meter update. Is that you again, Mark, or is that?
That's me.
That's you again, great.
Okay, so this is the current status of, obviously, the equipment that's helping us transmit from those perma logs. So this right here, just to start off with, actually, I debated showing you the map that we brought to you all in 2014, because we've, we've put a lot of meters in the ground of the smart meter technology. But just as a, kind of a, a one glance at where we're at now, everything in the red is now our smart meters, our FlexNet environment. The blue is what remains in direct read meters, the manual read. And the yellow are also radio read meters, but those are the walk-by, drive-by meters that we're reading out of the vehicle with a vehicle transmitter. The nice thing is about the yellow ones, I'll tell you, it'll come up a little later in the slide, is those are going to be super easy to convert because the meters are the same. You don't have to change the meter, it's just a transmitter change. So once we get the direct read meters out, that's what we'll be looking forward to next. So here's the physical numbers, the direct reads are right now at, well, I'm sure as, because I put this together a week ago, that number's probably at 2,700 at this point because CH is changing these meters quickly, rapidly. 20, 28, 21 is 13 and a half percent of the, the 21061 we have in total meters in our system. The drive-by, walk-by, drive-by meters, which are also radio, are at just under 7,000 and then our FlexNet meters are 11,275. But this is going to change rapidly. So the goal's projected over the next two years, and that's counting this year and our next fiscal cycle, which we will hopefully complete this. We're going to eliminate the direct reads. One of the added benefits is the third and final tower ground base, which is the TGB, the antenna up on Glassford Hill, which we, we came to you a couple of years ago and we installed a second antenna on Granite View tank. And I guess, working closely with, with the vendor and census, and, you know, they want the product to be performing well, they use it as, you know, we were the first ones in the Southwest to deploy this technology. So they use us kind of like as a, an example for all the others. A lot of times, they've been gracious enough to allow us to put in a third transmitter at our Prescott Country Club tank, which will help our lower area in the Country Club, Stone Ridge area to close those gaps. And they're providing that at no cost to the town. In the near future, we're hoping to deploy the web, web-hosted portal for customer interface so customers can be interactive with their usage. It, it's, it's a great tool. We'd like to get that third TGB up and get all of our meters out and get them to a radio read environment and then we'll probably be coming to you and hoping to provide that to our consumers. And like I said before, converting those walk-by, drive-by meters would be actually in our very near future, we're hoping. There's a lot of value in that, on the customer service side. I can't tell you the customers, it's easy, it, it helps everything. CH, or before, we were going out and doing a lot of manual driving to meters, you know, looking at them, getting reads. We don't, if it's a flex meter, you know, it's like, you know, a minute and a half, it's in the office and we're done. Customer has a problem, they pull it up on a screen, they can tell them when they use it, how much, and, you know, what it looks like they've used over the last three days, whatever they need. It's all right there at their fingertips. So 1819 direct read replacements, based on what we have left in meter inventory, there'll be about 2,000 meters or less to replace in our next year's cycle. That cost will be at about 461,000. Our current budget's set at 750,000. That would cover our annual replacements and new meter installs for the year for the subdivisions. If I can get this level, it'll allow us to complete our direct read replacement next year. Our last remaining goal is to convert, like I've said before, the VX, the walk-by, drive-by transmitters, not meters, to the FlexNet smart, smart meters, which will give us that added benefit. And those are the 6,800 to 6,850. It's hard to say because we change those as needed when we may have a problem with one, but we assume we'll be somewhere close to 6,800 once we're done with the direct reads. And if you look at the comparative cost, you know, we're going to change almost 7,000 transmitters for 600,000, 615,000 versus 2,000 for the 461. So, you know, we get a lot of bang for our buck to be able to get, bring 7,000 meters into that FlexNet smart meter environment. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
I do.
Marty?
Yeah, I saw you have there that the, the cost of the meters are 461,000. Is that a cost that we recoup after they're installed?
Well, probably in the added value and the benefit in the contract, there's a lot of different ways we do recoup it. In the customer service, I haven't put a defined cost to, I, I, you know, right here, sitting there, but the biggest thing is, is the reduction in staff, the efficiency. So I can't really say-
So the customer isn't charged for the, for the water meter when they move in?
When they move in, they are. That 750,000 was our annual budget, 461 is just for replacements. The rest of those meters were for new meter installs, they're getting paid by the developers when they-
Okay, so the only time that we collect the fee for installing a meter is when it's a brand-new house, correct?
Or a new service that we may install from time to time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Marty, you're going to recover your cost in saved labor-
Yeah.
-in a four-to-five-year period plus. These meters that are being swapped out, many of- These meters that are being swapped out, many of them are in excess of 20 years old and what happens is they read poorly. A very old water meter will not read the true amount of water going through it and so somebody with a really old water meter is getting a heck of a bargain because they're not being charged all the gallons they're using.
About 7% to 10%. We did, we actually tested meters of the vintage volume over a million and then we tested age before we started into the program. And our direct read meters were all running, like Larry said, no less than seven and some of them were well over 10 in the 14%. So, you know, we're giving 14% of waterway free on these old direct read meters.
No, it's good to know, you know.
Yeah, totally is.
Someone asks me a question, I have an answer.
Definitely. Yeah, sure.
Laura?
What's the process for citizens who don't want the smart meter?
Well, we, you know, we've only had a few, a handful and what we've done is we've, we're providing a, at this point, we're providing a, it's an SR2 brand-new style meter, but it's, it just doesn't have the transmitter attached if that's what they've asked for.
Yeah, that's what they...
We figured eventually we'll have to look at it. Once we get all of our direct reads replaced and we're trying to provide value through the smart, the smart meters or the Flex or even the radio, walk-by, drive-by, we would relook at that. But at this point, we have probably less than 10 in the whole system.
I'm glad to hear that because...
I know it's less than 10.
It's a culture out there that is very concerned about technology.
Right. It's not, you know, the value of the system is that it's, before it would create a little bit of a problem in a route to have these segments that weren't covered like that, whether it was one or 10. With the FlexNet, it's really of no consequence.
Any other questions or comments? Mike?
Yeah, I was just curious. We're just talking about all residential, correct? We're not doing anything on the commercial side?
It's every meter in town.
Is it?
Yeah.
So, it's commercial and residential?
Actually, we targeted business district and large volume meters first.
Okay.
Because that's usually where most of the revenue's lost, so, you know, 10% on a front pack meter is huge.
Right.
So, we actually targeted the business district, all commercial meters first.
Okay. And I saw the yellow kind of on 69. Is that the commercial that still haven't been converted?
Some of those are, but those are on the radio side, but those are new meters. They're just on the radio, but those are all new meters, yeah.
When do you project getting this completed where there is information on the website relative to each citizen's?
We would hope, we'll have the, actually, I'll have that third transmitter installed before the fiscal ends this year. I've already, it's already arrived. I'm actually working with the group to get it installed at our tank site. We'll probably finish this cycle out. We may be coming to you hopefully with our budget next year and we may try to offer that or ask for that to be offered to the consumers.
And the last question I had was, speaking of leaks, this is really not going to detect anything other than usage because I know from past use, if there's a leak, we'll notice that, you know, obviously a jump in cost and so that we know then there's a leak.
Right.
And that's something that again, I'm looking at, if it's on the computer, we can look at it monthly and get an idea or whenever.
Well, and to be honest with you, it definitely does because when someone calls in and how big or small, inconsequential, but when we pull up the graph, you can tell when a smart, I mean, if you have the FlexNet and the smart meter is what you're looking at, you can tell their usage trends. You can look at like a week, you can see, and you can see the bar graphs and you can narrow it down to days or one day. You can see actually when they've had a leak, like maybe a toilet hung up, maybe they had an irrigation leak with a, you know, maybe a solenoid's hung up and there's one of their piece of equipment outside. The minute something goes running 24/7, how big or small, you can see that on this. You can tell exactly. It's like a line and then it's directly across.
Right.
Other than the little consumptions that you would view as normal during 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see that a lot.
It's so nice for our customer service folks to be able to tell them that. I mean, they're so thankful. I can't even tell you. It's a huge tool and great to have.
Well, it is remarkable. I noticed we're pretty stable. We don't have a lot of changes in use, so it's very discernible when there is a leak.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Barry Hill?
Thank you, Mayor.
I think you've done a good job.
Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Meeting is adjourned.